Very good, all right. So I call this meeting to order, a public session at, is that correct? Eight P M. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and thank you for your patience. The board has an awful lot of business to conduct and things to discuss. And our executive session ran a bit longer than anticipated. We expected the meeting to convene at seven fifteen. We're going to deviate from what the agenda is printed here because we do have a seven thirty public hearing that's been noticed in the newspaper. A public notice has been made, so we're going to go immediately to that agenda item number eight, and then we'll skip around a bit to pick up on the rest of the meeting. All right, so Mrs. Moore, do you have the notice of public hearing?
Yes, the notice of public hearing. Can you hear me? In accordance with chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts general laws, a public hearing will be held by the select board on Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P M. in room fourteen, Town Hall, two thirty-five North Street in North Reading, Massachusetts, and via virtual technology, on the application of Aria and Julie, Inc., doing business as Route Twenty-Eight Lucky Mart, for the following amendments to its license: Change of license classification from malt and wine to all alcohol; change of manager; change of officers-directors; change of stock; and change of officer's stock or ownership interest. License to be exercised at two oh two North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a one-story building, no cellar, and one back room for storage and two lavatories. The hearing may be accessed virtually as follows. Do I need to read that?
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Again, Mr. Gilberto, I'm sorry, I haven't got my laptop with me here as far as what is, but I understand there's two sets of motions here depending upon the board's actions.
So there's a single set, I believe, that's in there with regard to approval. There's a discussion that takes place, and the board is, you know, looking to go in a different direction for any number of reasons. Our recommendation would be to indicate the rationale why in the discussion, and then the appropriate motion should be offered.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. I didn't know we were having a public hearing, not that my mind is still talking about the same thing, but where in our agenda does it say public hearing, like, all the other public hearings we've had?
It's just on the agenda, seven thirty is the appointed time.
Okay, so it doesn't, it's not calling out a public hearing that we're required to put that?
Yeah, it was published in the paper and then online.
Oh, okay, because usually it's on the agenda, okay. Thank you.
So if the applicants would like to take us?
Without the applicants.
Without the applicants, okay. Are the applicants present?
I believe they have counsel, and I'm going to see.
Counsel online, and counsel is?
Attorney Arthur Perlman.
Attorney Holder?
Arthur Perlman.
Can you hear me?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
And who might you be?
Hello?
Hello, yes.
Yeah, this is Arthur Perlman.
Arthur, how are you?
Oh, did you want me to put the video on too, or no?
Uh, yeah.
Sure, that would be, I'd like to see a smiley face.
It says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Don't take it personally.
One moment.
I've been insulted worse than that.
All right, try now.
You want me to stop?
Try now, sir.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right, not your fault.
If you do it, I'll put the video on.
Try, try the video, you should be able to do it now. You should, Arthur, you should be able to put it on now.
Will we try it again?
Sure, please. There you are.
Hey.
At least the top of your head.
Did it do it?
Yes.
It did.
Okay. If it pleased the board, my name is Arthur Perlman. I'm representing Aria and Julie, Inc., doing business as Route Twenty-Eight Lucky Mart, located at two oh two North Street in North Reading. I'm sorry to report that the prior owner of Aria and Julie, Inc., Vijay Ben Patel, has passed away. The company is seeking to transfer the stock of the corporation from Vijay Ben to her daughter-in-law, Jill Patel, who is now the hundred percent shareholder. They're also seeking a change of officer-director of the corporation of Aria and Julie. Lastly, they are seeking a change of manager on the liquor license. The corporation holds a wine and malt beverage package store license, and therefore this change of stockholder, officer, director, as well as the change of manager must be approved by the town of North Reading and the A B C C. I have submitted an affidavit and exhibits relative to the published notice as well as mailed notice to abuders. Aria and Julie is a mass corporation. If the transfer of stock and changes are approved, Jill Patel will be the president, treasurer, secretary, sole director, and a hundred percent shareholder. And if the change of manager is approved, Deva Patel will be the manager on the liquor license. Jill Patel is currently living at two sixty Salem Street in Andover, Massachusetts. Deva Patel is currently living at one oh six Delmon Avenue in Lowell, Massachusetts. Deva, as manager on the liquor license, will spend at least forty hours a week at this business. The current operating hours will be maintained, the layout of the store will be maintained, nothing regarding the operation of the business is changing. This is about corporate structure, stock ownership, and manager on the liquor license. Deva Patel has experience from working at Andy's Liquor in Wakefield and working at this store since shortly after the passing of Vijay Ben. Both Jill and Deva are tip strain and have their certification. Deva is familiar with the laws relative to the sale of alcohol or absoled the statutory law as well as any rules or regulations of the town of North Reading regarding the sale of alcohol beverages. Therefore, I would respectfully request that your change of officers-director, stockholders, and manager on the liquor license be approved. We also have requested for a change of category of the liquor license from wine and malt to an all-alcohol license. We learned about the availability of an alcohol license that has been available since at least, I think, May or June of this year. And my client wanted to upgrade the existing wine and malt license to an all-alcohol license. Route Twenty-Eight Liquor Mart's lease does not allow to carry convenience store items. Therefore, my client is only able to carry alcohol items, soda, cigarettes, and water. And I believe that cigarettes are surely going to be phased out. And for those reasons, my client is seeking for a change of category. I would also point out that neither Deva, Jill, nor Vijay Ben before them has ever sold to a buyer or violated any law, rule, or regulation regarding the sale of alcohol. As a matter of fact, the previous owner of this store had so many violations that your board took their license away. Since my client has had the license, not only have there been no violations, but my client has limited licenses to Officer Andy Lukowitz of the Reading Police Department that have been confiscated from people attempting to purchase beer and wine using false IDs. I believe that over the period of time, they have confiscated and turned over to the police about thirty licenses. I would respectfully request that this board also approve the change of category from a beer and wine license to an all-alcohol license. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Perlman. The, again, you said Deva is currently employed there and has had experience working in a package store in Wakefield, is that what?
In Wakefield.
Yeah, in Wakefield.
Andy's Liquors.
Andy's Liquors, okay. And then, again, as far as your performance, your client's performance is to date, we greatly appreciate not having to meet them in person like we did with the previous owners, which we did on a more regular basis, unfortunately. And yet we congratulate them for running a good shop, and we appreciate all the efforts that have been put into it. The, is there anybody in the public, do we want to take the, all at once, or should we, again, I have the motions in front of me, but as far as the upgrading of the license, can that be done after we approve the change in manager, change in board of directors?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we have this advertised as a single hearing, so I would hesitate to say taking items out of order. If during the discussion is a portion of the application that is more challenging or concerning, perhaps that, that might be left to the end, but I think we probably want to take any input on the whole. I would like to also just ask Attorney Perlman if he could just clarify, our staff prepared a motion and a notice that included a common vixular license. Are you, in fact, seeking a common vixular license for a location, sir?
Are you asking me if there's a common vixular license here?
Are you seeking one?
I don't, I don't believe there is. I think it's strictly a liquor license.
Okay, just want to clarify that, thank you.
And I apologize, I'm having a hard time hearing, unless they said it might be my computer, I apologize.
All right, so as far as the public input portion of this public hearing, is there anybody present here in the room or online that wishes to address the board and the application before us at this particular time?
We would ask if you're attending virtually to, when we get to you, just if you could raise, raise your hand.
Yeah, raise your hand, and again, identify name and address for the record. Yes, sir. Please come up and use the microphone over there. Sure.
Hi, everybody. So my name is Amit Patel, and I'm also partner with Prashant Patel in North Reading, the Christopher's Market. We did not know that the license got available in the May-June. I don't know how the license got available, so we just found out that in the newspaper there is a hearing, and so I was thinking, like, we also have our family also, another family friend also owns the store on the Route Twenty-Eight, it's called East Gate Liquors. So I think there is already two, three liquor store already on that street. So I don't know why we just keep adding on the same area and same, like, a saturated market. If we could, if we could apply for it, and we could get, if it is, if we, if we have a chance to apply for the application and get a license over there at the Christopher's Market.
Very good.
And thank you, that's all I want to say.
Mr. Anybody else that, yes, sir. Can, name an address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Currently, I'm a resident of North Reading at Country Club Road, and also business, local business owner at Christopher's Market. I've been in town for eight years now.
And your name again?
Oh, my name is Prashant Patel, I'm sorry. So I was requesting same, you know, category for liquor license. I live, you know, I'm on the other side of town, and I've been running business for eight years without any incident, and my fa, my kids go to school system, you know, I'm planning to leave for a long time, and I also have a lot of residents who's supporting petitions, you know, a lot of petitions signed from local residents and friends. They want the license on their side of town because there's no liquor license available. So it would be easier for, you know, people to take a trip their side, you know. So I'm petitioning to have me apply for the license, and you guys vote on whichever the best location to have liquor permit.
Understood. And Mr. Gilberto, I understand there was some correspondence forwarded to the board.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. There were a couple of letters that I believe we received prior to publishing the meeting packet, and then there was a longer letter, more of a petition style, that came in today, was hand-delivered, and I believe circulated by email to the members of the board.
It's almost like, I had almost two hundred and ninety people from the community sign petition to have liquor license for their location, Christopher's. And if you guys need more, you know, signature, I could, you know, customer, like, and residents willing to, you know, issue that.
Just see what, that's not the one I'm looking for. If we need to, is there anybody online that wishes to, to speak? Do you see any hands?
I'm not seeing any hands squat.
Not seeing any hands, okay. What I would like to do is, if we have that correspondence. That correspondence.
I saw this morning, Mr. Aler, you look like a timeline.
From Jen?
Yeah.
I think eight fifty-six A M.
Are you looking to have it read into the record, or?
Yeah, I think, so I'll just see what it says. Well, I would like to acknowledge the receipt of current correspondence from Damascus Law Offices. Aria Givianish, Inc., D B A Christopher's Market, their select board members. This office represents Givianish Incorporated, D B A Christopher Market, Givianish, Inc., which is located to Washington Street, has a wine and malt beverage license, and has owned Christopher's Market, Christopher's, since two thousand and seventeen. We understand that the town has one available license for the sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on premises. Christopher's would like to be considered for that license. If at your meeting September fif, September fifteenth, there will be a hearing on a similar application by Aria and Julie Incorporated, D B A Lucky Mart, which is located at two oh two North Street. We believe that Christopher is a superior candidate for the one remaining license for a number of reasons. First, Lucky Mart is in close proximity to two other establishments with all alcoholic beverage licenses. In contrast, there are no such establishments close to Christopher's. Therefore, public need and convenience would be better served by granting the license to Christopher's. Second, my client operates a bigger store with more variety and has been in business at his current location since two thousand and seventeen without incident. We request that you deny or at least table the application of Lucky Mart so that we can file an application on behalf of our client and be considered on equal footing. We believe that our client can best fulfill the mandate of Massachusetts general laws, chapter one thirty-eight, section twenty-three, that licenses should be issued, quote, "with a view only to serve the public need." Thank you for your consideration. Virtually yours, Thomas Damascus. And then also, in addition, petitions, a petition was signed by?
Three hundred and seven.
Three hundred and seven individuals with name and addresses attached. The following petition says, "I am a resident of the town of North Reading and a customer of Christopher's Market. It is a well-run business which serves the community very well, and I would like to be able to buy liquor, buy liquor there. I therefore respectfully petition the select board to issue a license, a license for the sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises to Christopher's Market." That being said, of course, there is no application before this board in relation to Christopher's Market. So what's before us tonight for the board members to consider is whether or not to issue the one remaining license that we have or not to the applicant this evening. Is there any other public input from anybody here in the audience, Town Hall, or online? If online, please signify by raising your hand, and you'll be recognized. All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, public input.
Still got us.
I'm sorry.
Still got us.
No, 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 I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the, of the public hearing, and the board will now deliberate on the motions before us.
That's not how this works.
This is how it works, is that you close the public hearing, and then the board deliberates. Yeah, Mr. Studo.
So for the other things, you know, change of manager, all those, I mean, just like we've always done, when we asked Mr. Gilberto if the, if the application is in order, right, and everything's been met, I think on that, you know, I think that's an easier thing. However, on the other matter of the change of category, I do think that it is in the public's interest to at least consider others. Also, I believe there was a third correspondence from the gentleman who operates the Dollar Tree, that he wants to sell booze. Yes, there was an email about that, too.
I didn't see that one.
I, yeah, I, I don't think he's going to be able to do that, I mean, he won't be popular. But I do think it's worth noting, and Mr. Aler, after I'm done with this, I can tell you exactly when the email got sent, but I do think it is worth considering it because there is, it's actually East Gate, New England Beverage and One Stop. It's two miles total between, from East Gate to One Stop. So within two miles, there are three. So there are a lot. So I'm, and again, I'm not saying that there's any merit to not having a fourth, but I'm saying because of that, I do think that it's worth at least listening to other applications and at that point determining, or this board determining at that point, hopefully also with a full board, because I think Mr. Walmer will be back at that point as well, which I think is important for that license, because, you know, from a, you know, it was a compelling case to at least hear it and postpone. And that's just my opinion on, I never really thought about it until then of how close of proximity those other three are when you come down Main Street. And I don't think, no, Walmart, no, Walmart, no, that's not in this town. So, and actually, if you expand upon it more, not that we, North Reading matters, but if you keep going another, like, mile and a half each direction, there are now the Andover and Readings that come in, so like, Main Street is pretty.
Is saturated.
Yes, it would, I mean, if you, if you forget to take a wrong turn, just wait thirty seconds, and you can take another one. So that's why, just to, that's my opinion, that on the other ones, that as long as everything is in order, I would, you know, like we always do, it's kind of run-of-the-mill, the transfer of license, as long as everything's in order, but on, on that point, I think there's a compelling argument for, is it, is it better for the community in whole to just have something different? I'm not even saying that's the case yet, because we have to see the full application even for the applicant. As you loaded, Mr. Aler, there's no application, it's just kind of a request to give us time to put an application, if I'm understanding correctly.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Moore?
Mr. Massey, you have your hand first.
You go.
I mean, I kind of agree with Mr. Studo, within two-mile radius, there is three additional establishments that have a full license. I don't think it serves the public best to add one more. It's not a different type of establishment, so I would agree with Mr. Studo, we should wait to grant the full alcohol license to the original applicant, but if the remainder of the request is in order and correct, we should proceed with that.
Mr. Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I also agree with Vincenzo, Mr. Studo, sorry. And I agree, this is maybe run-of-the-mill things, and if it's standard procedure, it sounds like it's good to go. When we received this letter on September tenth, I sent it right off to my board, and I said, "They make a valid, they make a valid point." And I do think geographically, if you're spreading that, those services out, sale of alcohol, to serve the other side of town as well is, is very important. And I think Christopher's Market, they also gathered three hundred and seven signatures, which is pretty impressive in a short amount of time. So good view, it's good defense to have for us to look at. And I think they've been a solid business in town, but, but more so on the, on the purpose of being able to geographically spread it out. And just to touch bases, three liquor stores within two miles, but that doesn't include gas stations either, which do sell beer and wine.
Mr. Studo?
Also, I'd just like to note to what Mr. Massey said, he did send that communicate, there was no response, no deliberation.
Correct.
Nothing at all, just in case, we have some people that are bored deep in the heart of Texas. Thank you.
Correct. And again, from my vantage point, I think we've, for years, we have been trying to ensure that the sale of certain goods and services can be provided across the community, to everybody's point that they made this evening, and we have full, three full liquor stores on Route Twenty-Eight within a two-mile stretch of road, so it's not a matter of public convenience that needs to be met here. Those terms and conditions have been met by this board and by the community. Just because we have the license doesn't mean we have to issue it at all. We can hold on to it in hopes that someone, somewhere else in the community can better serve or best serve the community from a convenience standpoint. I think that's the best approach to take at this particular point in time. And it's been held before, this is a practice that has taken place in the past also. Whether Christopher's application comes to fruition or not does not have a bearing on, to me, on this, on this application at this particular point in time. I don't think this application meets the threshold of meeting a community need and one that this board has to act upon necessarily favorably. Should an application comes in from someone on the easterly side of town, it'll be considered like any other application, and we can determine if it's a suitable location, if there's suitable people who are able to run the facility, and their past practices and all the rest that go along with it. So if and when that occurs, we'll consider that. So at this particular time, I'm not necessarily in favor of issuing the one last license that we have at this particular point in time. Sure, Attorney Perlman, you certainly have the floor.
May I ever respond?
Absolutely.
All right, when we came in, nobody else had applied. This license has been available for a while now. If the board wants to consider, and I understand what you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing with you, that other people can have an opportunity to be heard, I would ask that this, that portion of our application that deals with the change of category be continued to your next meeting, and allow these people, and allow my people, longer we know there are other people that are applying, and they can take their shots at us because they know we're there. We can't do anything to counter what they're saying because they weren't there until they all of a sudden appeared. So if the board feels you want to hear other people to see who might be the most, the best beer in town, I would ask that this matter be continued to your next meeting, and that these other people can appear, and we can appear, now understanding that there are people who are challenging us.
Again, I don't necessarily look at the information provided by these other individuals and even the petitioners that signed it as in opposition to you getting the license. I look upon it more as there's a need for convenience in servicing the public on the eastern side of town that hasn't been met, and there's a potential opportunity to meet those needs. And again, I am not, my own personal opinion, sort of, is not in opposition to your application for those, because these people came forward with three hundred and seven signatures, I don't care if they came forward with three hundred or three thousand, that doesn't affect it, doesn't affect my thinking. My thinking, when I first saw this application and not seeing anything else from any other interests anywhere else, my position is the same. I think that the public convenience is being met on Route Twenty-Eight very well and very easily, and that the need for us to issue this one last license, there's no sense of urgency on my part to act on, favorably on that portion of your application. So it doesn't, to me, it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, Christopher's coming in and giving us a petition or anything else. My position would still be the same, that I don't think there's a compelling need at this point to issue the license. It may highlight to the public that there is a license available and may generate some additional interest on the, on the east side of town. And again, if someone, you know, a quarter mile south of you on Route Twenty-Eight come in, my position would be the same. I'm not just going to issue the license for, what is it, a twelve-hundred-dollar fee just to get the twelve-hundred dollars to the town and give up the opportunity to better meet the public service needs on the east side of town. So my goal is to see if we can get a suitable applicant, express some interest. So, my goal is to, to see if we can get a suitable applicant, express some interest before I vote to issue the license.
Just to jump in, my, my opinion's the same as yours. I, I, as far as holding the license, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. I, I, I think there was a compelling argument made that a lot of the board members here Obviously, there is only one application at this time, so we can vote on only one application, not choosing between one and two. Obviously, your next step may want to be a recommendation to apply, and then once that happens, the board will get the opportunity to act on it. But just, you make, you, you, very valid point of it's not one or the other, it's, it's community needs and spreading the services amongst the community.
And, and again, I will publicly congratulate your clients again for cleaning up a mess that was there before. They've done an admirable job, they continue to do an admirable, admirable job in servicing the community as the previous, in what other capacity that they're doing it now and within the constraints that they have. Wish them nothing but success. As far as the change of manager, again, Mr. Gilberto, there's no objections on the part of any of our regulatory departments. Yes, that's correct. Everything's been favorable as far as the transfer of the license, the change of manager, and change of directorship, that's all being recommended by our professional staff to the board. And I have no qualms about acting favorably in those requests. Attorney Perman, you have any other, and again, I, again, I don't particularly, this is my own personal opinion, my board members will express their own. I don't see the need to continue the hearing. I don't see the need for you to have your clients go and get a whole bunch of petitions signed and all the rest, just to, to show that there's a desire of some, of part of the public to, to buy their alcoholic beverages at your store. There's no doubt in my mind that you can get the signatures and have them come forward, but that doesn't change my position as far as spreading it around a little bit, giving the opportunity. But, but the board members can run in their, their own personal opinions on that. Anything else you'd like to address, Attorney Perman? No, Attorney Perman, you're all set?
I'm sorry, I'm not having a very hard time understanding who you're asking.
I'm just asking, I, I said, you know, I, I don't, personally, I don't see a compelling need to continue the hearing, you know, to our next meeting, you know, to, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that your client would be capable of, of getting, you know, petitions signed in support of their, their application, but I, I don't see the, first of all, changing my mind, finding the need to, to have your client go through that exercise unnecessarily, let's put it that way. It's not necessarily gonna change my position on it, but it's up to the majority of the board here if we wish to continue it at your request, or just continue, or just move on and act upon the application that's before us. I'll defer.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Studo?
I, I agree. I think we should move on with the application as it stands to change the managers and directors.
Right, all right. Any other comments, Attorney Perman, that you'd like to offer?
No, the only thing I offered was if, if you wanted to give these other people a chance to apply, they could apply, and we would come back with more information on us and why we would be an inappropriate place, even though I hear them saying that there's a, a license here or a license there. I would like to be able to be heard on that, if, if that pleases the board.
Right, but the facts are not gonna change. See, we have One Stop Liquors, we have New England Beverage, and we have Eastgate Liquors, all on Route twenty-eight within a two-mile stretch of road.
I understand.
To, you know, to still, Mrs. Warren's, you know, we're pretty well saturated. And the public needs are being met from the hours of operation of these establishments and the availability. We think they've sufficiently met on that section of the, of the community. Is there anything else you'd like to?
Hearing, I, I can't make out what's being said. I apologize, I'm just not hearing it.
What, what portion didn't you hear? You know, there's, the facts are not gonna change a week from now or two weeks, two weeks from now, that there are three establishments, One Stop Liquors, New England Beverage, and Eastgate Liquors, all within a two-mile stretch on Route twenty-eight. There appears to be a consensus built here that we believe that there's enough in the way of service of operating hours and availability to the public in that section of the community to meet the community needs, so that we don't feel as though at this particular point in time, there's a need to issue a fourth license out there. And if, so, anything else? You know, there does appear to be a compelling need on the board's part at this point to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
You.
Let's get a motion going.
Sorry. Is there any, if not, we'll just move on. Mrs. Warren, do you have some motions?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, so just to clarify, there is a motion included in there for a common virtual license. I think we should ignore that. They're not seeking that, and that would make sense based on the type of license that they have. I would suggest, based on what I'm hearing, that the board consider the next motion, which is regarding the change of manager, so that's on page seven of the meeting packet.
And, and excuse me, just in the, I have to make, fairness, Mr. Studo, you said there was another piece of correspondence from?
Yeah, so it was, let's see, it came from, it was emailed by Ms. McNeil on Friday at eight-twenty-two, that also there's somebody here, Mr. Vipul Patel wrote to them to establish, yeah, sixty-seventy-two Main Street, North Reading, and I think that, who was proposing to open an alcoholic store at the Dollar Tree location. Because I think the Dollar Tree, they can't, they don't have any stuff right now for a dollar.
Yeah, if, Mr. Gilberto, if he could pull it up and just read it into the record, I appreciate that, and let the record show that we did get the correspondence.
Sure. Appears to be from Vipul Patel, dated Friday morning, Seventeen Calistone Way, North Billerica, Massachusetts, attention to the select board. Dear sir and madam, regarding request for consideration to open a new liquor store in North Reading, Mass., dear members of the select board, my name is Vipul Patel, and I am writing to formally express my interest in opening a new liquor store in the town of North Reading, Mass. at the following location, number sixty-dash-seventy-two Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, zero-one-eight-six-four. For reference, I currently own and successfully operate liquor stores in other towns, including Kelly's Iron Horse Liquor, North Billerica, Mass., Ocean Glove Packet, Marshfield, Mass., Hewitt's Package, Lawrence, Mass., Chabow Convenience Store, Lawrence, Mass., Corner Cupboard, Chelmsford, Mass. With years of experience in retail operations and responsible alcohol sales, I have built a strong reputation for compliance with all state and local regulations. I'm confident that my background dedication would allow me to establish a safe, well-managed, and community-friendly business in North Reading. I respectfully request the select board's consideration of my application and would welcome the opportunity to meet with you to discuss the proposal further. I should note, I don't believe we have received an application at this point in time. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. I will forward, I look forward to your response sincerely, Vipul Patel.
So, please include that in the minutes of the meeting as far as correspondence received. That's it. Motion, Mrs. Warren.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a change of manager for the retail package goods store slash wine and malt beverage license for Orion Julie Inc. doing business as Route twenty-eight Lucky Mart on two-and, on, on two-oh-two North Street from Vipul Patel to Dival Patel to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. A motion and a second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I would then suggest the board consider the vote with regard to the change of officers, directors, LLC managers. I believe it's gonna be in the next page.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change of officers, directors, LLC managers, manager for the retail package goods store slash wine and malt beverage license for Orion Julie Inc. doing business as Route twenty-eight Lucky Mart at two-oh-two North Street to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion, maybe Mrs. Warren, second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Warren.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And then the next motion with regard to the issuance, transfer of stock.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve issuance, transfer of stocks slash new stock holder manager for the retail package goods store slash wine and malt beverage license for Orion Julie Inc. doing business as Route twenty-eight Lucky Mart at two-oh-two North Street to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Motion, aye. Second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Warren.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, based upon what I've heard here this evening, my suggestion would be that perhaps a motion to be entertained would be to deny the request for a change of category, based upon findings of fact, which from my notes here include the fact that there are three establishments on Main Street with all alcohol licenses, that those establishments are within a two-mile stretch. I believe the board also expressed a desire to understand what other options geographically might be available for the license, and also that there were, there are additional beer and wine-only establishments serving alcohol in that same stretch of road.
So, we have a motion prepared?
Not prepared, no.
No.
And I believe the motion would be to deny the application for change of category.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny change of category from malt and wine to all alcohol for Orion Julie Inc. doing business as Route twenty-eight Lucky Mart at two-oh-two North Street to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. And we should include the reasons?
I think that the board should ask the findings of fact be included in the motion.
Okay, and that the findings of fact as outlined by the town administrator be incorporated into the overall motion. All right? That's a motion, and we have a second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Warren.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Again, Attorney Perman, again, again, thank you very much for being a good advocate for your, for your client, and again, we wish them nothing but continued success, and we appreciate all of their efforts in their operations right now, and thank you for coming forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, that's all set.
Let me tell you about this new...
Not today.
All right. Just put it, I'll take a public comment. Do we have anybody wishing?
Close, close the hearing?
What's that?
Close the hearing.
No, we just voted, it's done. Aaron Lozier, we took our votes, we're done. So, Mr. Skeller.
Mike Skellner, two forty, Mark Zalining, one oh-two. Just a couple of reminders. So, North Reading goes purple all time, as I mentioned, awareness, this Sunday, September twenty-first at five P.M. at the gazebo on the town hall. So, if you can attend, please do so. Then the third annual Real Senior Prom event will be held on Tuesday, September thirtieth, from four-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. at the Wakefield Els. We do, we still have forty openings for seniors to attend at age sixty-plus, so please call the Edith O'Leary Senior Center at nine-seven-eight-six-six-four-fifty-six-hundred to make a reservation. This is a free event for all North Reading seniors, and thank you to all the businesses and individuals who are sponsoring the event thus far. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Anybody online, please raise your hand. See none, correct? All right. How about proclamation, National Service Dog Month? Mrs. Warren.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim September twenty-twenty-five as a National Service Dog Month in North Reading and to read associated proclamation.
If I read the proclamation, then we can, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Read the proclamation, then you vote.
Town of North Reading, September is National Service Dog Month Proclamation, September twenty-twenty-five. Whereas service dogs are vital partners in independence, dignity, and empowerment for people with disabilities, performing life-changing tasks that enhance mobility, confidence, and quality of life. And whereas K9 Companions, founded in nineteen-seventy-five, pioneered the concept of service dogs for people with physical disabilities, and this year proudly celebrates fifty years of service dogs, marking a major milestone in its mission to provide expertly trained service dogs to those in need. And whereas since its first placement in nineteen-seventy-five, K9 Companions have matched more than eight thousand two hundred service dog teams, serving adults, children, and veterans with disabilities, as well as professionals in healthcare, criminal justice, and education settings. And whereas all dogs and follow-up services have provided at no cost to clients, thanks to the dedication of volunteers, donors, and staff who breed, raise, and train these exceptional dogs. And whereas more than seventy million American adults live with a disability, yet only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited programs are currently working in the U.S., highlighting the urgent need to continue support and awareness. And whereas K9 Companions currently serves individuals with more than sixty-five different types of disabilities, operates eight regional centers nationwide, and maintains a waitlist of over five hundred individuals seeking the life-changing support of a service dog. Now therefore, I, Stephen O'Leary, Chair of the North Reading Select Board, do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-five as the National Service Dog Month in honor of the extraordinary contribution of service dogs and the fifty-year legacy of K9 Companions, who encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the profound impact service dogs have on the lives of people with disabilities, and to support organizations like K9 Companions that make that work possible.
Thank you. There is no doubt, and again, just recently happened to bump into somebody who actually trains the service dogs, and is a host home to train, and then the amount of effort and time and scrutiny of these animals is just unfathomable. I, I, I had an idea, but I had no concept. And what they do is just phenomenal, and what these animals do for people is something that, you know, is amazing, sure, nothing short of amazing. And I know that you, you had a request for this, for the beginning of the month, that somehow or another ended up in your spam folder, and you found it and brought it forward last week, so, you know, we apologize for not dealing with it in our first meeting in September, but as soon as we found it, we put it on the agenda, you know, because it is certainly a worthy, notable profession that trains these dogs for people with needs, and it's just, it's phenomenal. And, I mean, I happened to be at a, an establishment in Dorchester last weekend, and it was a woman with a puppy, it was like about five months old, healed right at her feet, and she was training, and she says, "If he makes it through, he could be a service dog. And if he doesn't make it through, he can still be a service dog, but he might bark too much," or, it's, it's funny things that, that actually knock them out of the box. And, and she just was explaining again what she was going through as a volunteer trainer to offer these services for, of these animals, and it's, the sacrifice is tremendous and appreciated, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to highlight Service Dog Month here in September in North Reading.
Right, and the services that the dogs provide are not enabling people with just visible disabilities, but also disabilities that are not immediately apparent, like someone...
visible disabilities, but also disabilities that are not immediately apparent, like someone who has diabetes. The dog can alert them that their blood sugar is spiking. You know, there are a lot of service dogs that serve children, and I think in general, it just brings awareness to some of the issues that people are dealing with, and then starts a conversation, and I think it leads to more acceptance of people with disabilities. And I think we should all be grateful for the folks who are, as you pointed, so selfishly trained the dogs. The dogs come to the folks that need services, that need charge, and it takes on average two years to train a dog. This particular organization both breeds and trains the dogs, and only certain types of breeds can become a service dog. Generally, it's a larger breed, and it's a breed that's usually a working type breed, so you don't see a lot of miniature poodles, but full-size poodles, German Shepherds, and it's a tremendous amount of work, and different types of dogs are bred for certain types of disabilities. Some are trained to be silent, and some are trained to be alerting other people living with someone who has disabilities to let them know that there's an issue. So it's, like you said, it's an unbelievable amount of work that goes into it. If you ever train the dog, any dog, to do anything, it's a lot of work, and to train the dog to behave sometimes contrary to its naturalistic, this treat takes a lot of dedication.
Some owners deep more training than the dogs. I'm not gonna mention my sons, but I tell you, we love our grand dogs, but wow, they're not service dogs, but they're lovable and terrific.
So we have a motion?
So we have a motion, and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I fully support this cause. I actually love this. This is really good, especially for blind, like you mentioned, a lot of disabilities, those who are mentally ill, it helps them comfort, as well as canine for law enforcement. The only question I was gonna ask is, didn't we just make September Alzheimer's Month?
The share in the month.
Yeah, the share.
Share in the month. Do we wanna give them their own October?
It's a national.
This is a national.
They're both a national.
We tie it in. There are so many worthy causes, and only 12 months in a year.
Yeah.
There are multiple times that we proclaim.
They can share it.
They can share it. Alright. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Massey.
Aye.
And Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Moran.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Board member reports and all the new business, we'll take it together. Mr. Massey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did have a few things to discuss tonight, but based upon the events of last week, I would like to just talk about the assassination of Charlie Kirk. The, one I would just like to say was pretty disgusting. One, a lot of, a lot of celebrities passed here and there, and really, you don't get too emotionally connected, you don't get, but I think Charlie Kirk getting assassinated really hit a generation differently, more so not what he, not exactly what he stood for, but more of the purpose of why he was assassinated, which was the most vile part to see. He leaves behind a widow Erica and his two young children. I know this entire board and the entire community, I would hope, would condemn one political violence and two, any violence in general. No one wants, everyone's got families and friends, and mourning a death is terrible. Charlie Kirk was 31 years old, and someone who was very, very successful at a very young age, and all for the sake of open-mindedness, all for the sake of allowing the opportunity of both sides of the table, regardless of what you think. He allowed open discussion. He hated no one. He was the opposite of a hateful person. And, you know, regardless of your political beliefs, he was a good person at the end of the day. And regardless of your political beliefs, no one should ever condone violence in any manner. We are all better than that. You know, when I, when I grew up, it's funny, you grow up, you go through grammar school, and some things stick with you, and some, some things don't stick with other people as they get older. One was love thy neighbor. So at the end of the day, we, you know, I'm thankful and I'm grateful for the opportunity given to me by the residents of North Reading to sit here and speak my mind. This is different than a lot of people in town have the opportunity to do. But I'm, I'm grateful for the debate, and I think having open debate is healthy. Again, we could, someone could prove you wrong 20 times to zero, and you can still walk away believing your beliefs, and that's okay. But the opportunity for debate, we should all be grateful for that. Love thy neighbor. Another, another, I'm sorry, and to that point, we could sit here and we could debate for hours on end, and, and we have, right? But at the end of the day, I always tell you guys that I, whether I see you at a coffee shop or at a bar, I would still buy you a beverage or a coffee. Some other words, a phrase that we certainly learned right about first grade, is sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. I think we need to get refreshed on that phrase and understand that you're always gonna go through life, people with different views, but don't let their words hurt you. Violence is absolutely never the answer. But more importantly, political violence can be and would be a cancer to this nation. Villainizing people that have opposing views is a way to incentivize violence, and it needs to stop. It is unsettling. There are people, near, far, short, and different, doesn't matter, that continue to villainize people that think different than them, and I, I would just ask that, love thy neighbor, you know, and people really took this death to heart, I think more not because of, again, what he stood for, which is fine, everyone has different opinions, but more the purpose of political violence, which was a cancer in and of itself. So I just want to publicly condemn the assassination of Charlie Kirk. No one should have a, it's unfortunate what the family has to go through, and I send them all my blessings. Thank you. Mr. O'Leary, I'm sorry, if I could with that, Mr. O'Leary, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Thank you.
At the same time, again, we need to acknowledge other violence which has taken place in our, in our country, whether it be the Speaker of the Assembly of the Minnesota House of Delegates and her husband, who senselessly shot down just a few weeks ago, senseless violence with children who were attacked and shot in church, school violence, so all of those horrendous.
This is disgusting. Mr. O'Leary, I, I just brought up a subject about someone getting killed.
I don't disagree with you.
And, and for you to immediately change it's very unsensitive.
In relation to what? You stated your case quite eloquently, and we had a moment of silence, and then I'm following up with other senseless violence that's taken place.
Senseless violence, I completely agree.
And what's, what's occurred, what's occurring and continues to occur across this nation, and what's an unfortunate set of circumstances. And again, as far as Charlie Kirk, you know, while I may not have agreed with much of anything that he espoused, what I admired most was the way in which he handled himself and handled his audiences, fully open discussion, inviting differences of opinion, and to be, to be admired for that. Again, there's a sense of nonviolence that he promoted, and it's terribly unfortunate and unacceptable as to what occurred and what happened. And I too would like to acknowledge that. So it's, again, we can have differences of opinion, and debate is healthy. How we handle ourselves is very important, too. And there's never any acceptance or room for violence. Okay, where you stand and what the political spectrum is, and what your philosophies are, totally unacceptable, and it's, it's important that we even here at the local level, you know, recognize it, acknowledge it, and it's exactly what we're doing. Appreciate you bringing it up. Anything else other than the business? Okay, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Studo.
I'd like to say I agree with everything that was said. I'll leave it at that. Although I, it was put the best way it could be put. Something definitely not as important, but important right now, the 20 Elm Street. So there was a hearing on the 11th, and there was a new presentation made. A second. Highlights, the conservation commission will have a hearing on October 7th on the traffic study being conducted. And there's, there was also a proposal for peer review for civil and traffic. The next hearing is on the 23rd at 6:00 in the, well, we wanted it right in the distance learning lab, but it will not be because it's already being used, so it will be back in the Performing Arts Center.
We believe so, yes.
And again, it just, there are about roughly, Mike said about 34 residents.
Thirty or forty.
Thirty, and, you know, a lot of the, the same issues have come up. Some of them, I mean, there's disagreements on studies, right, which are going to be reviewed, but that's the continuation. And again, that will be, from a timeline perspective, again, to reiterate, it was, the nine months was from the August 8th, correct, in the submitted?
Six months, correct, yes.
Six months, sorry, I keep saying that. Six months was from that, so.
August 27th.
So the next one will be the 23rd. We'll probably definitely have an update if anything is pertinent, you know, with my board member report. Other than that, really, that's really been the main focus. And then we do have a community impact team meeting tomorrow, and then we will, I'll have whatever transpires out of that meeting on my next board member report, a couple of weeks. Other than that, that's it. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Mrs. Moran?
Yes, so the North Reading Department of Public Works is responsible for maintaining the historic cemeteries in town, and the Historic Commission would like to organize a cleaning event for the historic markers, those are the over 100 years old, using a volunteer force. So this cleaning would be undertaken by trained volunteers, in line with best practices outlined by the U.S. National Cemetery Administration and other conservation commissions. And I'd like this to be taking place in October. I think they're looking for the board's approval. Go ahead, do that.
Do we think, we need board approval? Or just looking for a blessing?
I think they're looking for go forwards.
Cemetery?
The historic cemetery. The historic markers that are over 100 years old, they have, like in ground, they need to be moved out. So the Department of Public Works is responsible for cleaning it, and Historic Commission would like to do the actual work using trained volunteers.
That's very nice.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Personally, I appreciate the pulling this, the step forward and assist in doing so. Mr. Studo, any comments or concerns in relation to?
No, only that the group came forward earlier in the year and expressed a willingness to do it. We wanted to make sure that the community was aware that was happening, particularly families, and we have, you know, stones in the cemeteries, and just making them aware that this is gonna be taking place. So I think that's happening right here, so that's certainly good news, but I'll work with the D W to get a more formal notice out to let folks know that it's happening, in case somebody expresses an objection or otherwise.
Right, so any relative of the tour or an owner of the grave who does not wish their stones to be touched can come forward and say so in a letter addressed to Department of Public Works.
Right, and this is gonna be posted on the website, is it?
We'll post it.
We'll post it on the website so that, you know, someone's not paying attention tonight of watching us, that maybe they didn't know the occasion. Who put it out there on the whole media that it's gonna be taking place?
So no one is alarmed that someone is at the historic cemetery doing something? And it is worked on by volunteers who are trained to treat the historic grave markers with a specific set of.
That's a wonderful thing. Much appreciated.
I don't know anything about it, but I'd love to be included in that project. I think that sounds very interesting. Do you kind of volunteer my time if they'll take me?
Any other?
I don't have any additional reports. The COA meeting has been postponed due to some illnesses, so it's actually taking place tomorrow.
Very good. My only update this evening is not something that I take and enjoy and pleasure in bringing forth to the board. On November 8th, excuse me, September 8th, I along with the other board members, received an email correspondence from a town employee showing a chain of communication between the employee and its local member, Massey. Let me first say, thank you to the employee for, for having the courage to share this information with the board. It is not easy, and no employee should be put in this position. Mr. Massey is alleging that a local board of unpaid volunteers.
Nope, I, I declined alleging right away.
Excuse me.
Don't put words, don't try and, don't try and prop your story up with words. I did not allege.
You'll have plenty of opportunity to take your notes. Go ahead. So again, Mr. Massey is alleging that a local board of unpaid volunteers is quote defying a presidential executive order. The employee answered professionally and explained the executive order did not apply. At this point, Mr. Massey chose to include two other parties directly linked to, to the White House and the Trump administration in Washington, D.C., and attempted to elicit responses three additional times. Wisely, the employee stopped responding. Subsequently, three days later, Mr. Massey corresponded with another employee, CCing the same federal administration official, seeking confirmation that this other employee, quote, "will or will not be following another different presidential executive order." This action is wrong. This action may very well have put this community, employees, and volunteer board members in the crosshairs of this administration. This action is bullying and intimidation. As a member of this board and its chair, I cannot and will not sit idly by and let this happen. On Saturday, I reached out to, to ask Mr. Massey two questions, because I did not want to jump to conclusions. Who is this person he added to the email thread, and why did he think it was necessary and appropriate to include this individual? Informing that the individual is the Director of Domestic Policy Council and responsible for executive order enforcement, that he can quote CC anybody he wants, and maybe this person would answer his questions. I informed Mr. Massey that I believe his actions are inappropriate, unnecessary, unfair, and intimidating. We disagree. I informed him that the discussion would continue, which is tonight and now.
That's not.
Additionally, Mr. Massey has in the last two weeks made seven public records requests involving 34 separate items of our town employees. The fulfillment of these requests are labor-intensive and time-consuming for our public employees. What's happening is wrong, and the public has a right to know. But let me be clear, Mr. Massey has every right to request the information under the Freedom of Information Act, and he does have the right to CC anyone he would like. He does not have the right to abuse public employees or his public trust as a member of this board. Only he, he can and has made these choices. With that, I have nothing else. Feel free.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, of course. I'd love to respond. One, to the members of North Reading and to the members of this board. One, to the members of North Reading and to the members of this board, we, I just finished talking about divisiveness. To the members of this community, you are looking at a chairman who is extremely divisive, okay? I didn't, I, I was just talking about stopping divisiveness. All these words you used, abuse public employees, you lied about three or four times, but you wouldn't let me jump in when you lied. So it goes to show the rest of the community why you see I get so frustrated all the time is because I've probably caught him lying a few more times. So, at the end, what you said is that you mentioned on our phone call, you'd bring it up here, that's not what happened.
I said the discussion would continue?
Nope, so I'll tell the truth. This is my chance to respond. What happened was you said, "Well, I don't like your response enough, so we're going to talk about this again." And I said, "Okay, where and when? Want me to buy coffee? Where? When?" And you said, "It's going to be at my time of my choosing and my date of my choosing," which was just an insensitive response, to be frank. I mean, we're on the phone together, you might as well talk it out. So, Mr. Chairman, right now I don't have all my data collected and therefore I will talk to you at my choosing of my time and my date. Now, to quickly put it to bed on my side is one, yes, I have the right to copy whoever I want, all right? Again, I am learning the process and learning how a municipality at the local level can defy a presidential executive order. No interest, I'm just curious. How can you do that? And what I said in the email was, if you can refer to a law or some sort of guidance that you can send me, I mean, basically what I'm saying is throw me a bone, answer it. It's gone almost a week and a half without getting answered. In my opinion, I think that is a little concerning as to why emails that were getting responded so quick, all of a sudden got so dark. And again, state senators were on there, he felt the need to bring you onto it, but it's more, it's not the director of health, it's the border health. It's the border health. I'm not intimidating anyone, I'm not abusing anyone, and you say I put the administration in danger? There's no danger. So all these words that you throw out, what did I say earlier, Mr. Chairman? What did I say? Hold on one second, I'll say it out loud. Villainizing opposing views is a way to incentivize violence and it needs to stop. So while you keep wanting to villainize me, I will continue to deny and advise the community of the truth, okay? That is all I have to say. Again, you want to say you want to speak to me at your time? Well, sorry, Mr. O'Leary, today's not the time and I'll speak with you at my choosing. Thank you.
The important thing here is, the emails don't lie, your terminology doesn't lie and your actions don't.
Is, is, I should start recording our phone calls because that's enough.
I wouldn't be surprised if you were already doing that.
You continue to lie, no, because you get notified. You get notified, Steve, so I have no problem notifying you while we're on the phone.
It's easy to sit there and deflect from what actually is occurring here. And again, I don't make up these impressions.
You're a, you're a dangerous person with what you put into the community about people that are lies. Please, I would ask you that you stop.
I haven't served all these years.
This is your point of leadership, Mr. O'Leary, that the town's going to look to you to unify.
I hope so.
And this is what you do.
And I hope they do.
But you know what you do is when you say it's dangerous and all these hard words, which I know is just right out of your playbook, right out of your playbook, you scoop, you go one page, you go to the next, which, which word am I scooping today? And you grab them and you put them into your speech you came up with there. Good speech, great speech, really divisive, really lying, really untruthful. So I'll leave it to there. And the members of this community can choose to believe you or can choose to believe me.
And I would be more than happy.
I don't care if they believe you, I don't care if they believe me, what I'm saying is, again, at the end of the day, Mr. Gilberto, Mr. O'Leary, I don't know why you got involved, Mr. O'Leary, between border health and myself. I asked a question.
I was liaison to the border health, the issue that you were discussing, and again, the issue is an important, how you handle it.
That doesn't mean if you're the liaison.
The issue that was, that you're interested in.
Liaison doesn't mean that you step up and defend them.
The issue you were, you were discussing and wanted to continue to discuss, this board already, four members of this board said they had no interest in continuing any discussion, and you're continuing the discussion.
Doesn't matter. Nope, no, no, I'm not, nope. Again, stop twisting my words and my actions. I would ask you to stop and let me speak for myself.
More than happy to share the emails and what your words are, or what they were.
I'll say it out loud. I got nothing to hide. You always think, like, what do you think I'm going to say, like, no, please don't. I will put it out on Facebook for all I care, Mr. O'Leary.
I am more than happy to put my reputation and service to the community against yours and do exactly.
It's not about that. Stop, stop with the divisiveness. Enough, enough.
You enough.
You enough.
You're the one who is putting these positions, these town employees in an untenable position and it's, and it's unfair.
Attenable. No, how about this, Mr. O'Leary?
It's unfair.
I'm new, right? So I'm, I'm.
You can only use that excuse for a year and a half.
Oh, that's what he.
You're not that new.
By the way, timeout, that's what he, for those on, for those in the community, that's what he used on the phone. He said, "You're not allowed to use that excuse anymore." Okay, so Mr. O'Leary, as someone who's new to politics, what I'm going to say is, hey, I'm new, I heard an executive order come down, I'm just curious. How are we able to get away with it? Maybe there's a law that says under this and blank, blank, blank. I got nothing.
What is your response to, why would you include, why would you include this individual at the White House?
I can include anyone I want.
Why the necessity?
Oh, maybe you can respond. Maybe he can respond.
You're the one who did it.
Maybe he can respond. Doesn't matter.
See, again, why would you put someone on there who's not even, they don't even know North Reading exists?
Well.
And now all of a sudden you're emailing the White House.
This is a select and speaking, this is a select and speaking point of view.
So is the question is, why, why would you include?
Yeah, throw it out.
It wasn't necessary, you found it necessary and you haven't explained why, so.
No, I did to you, O'Leary, I did. I did. So enough with your, oh, we never talked, this happened, this happened. Enough, grow up.
I, and I.
Grow up and start telling the truth.
Enough, leave the employees alone, stop bad.
Stop telling the truth. You don't tell me what to do.
Stop and titty.
Hey, listen, you want to tell me what to do? I'll, I'll leave that to my father, all right? You, you, you sit there and you are one of five.
Apparently, I'm one of five.
Don't forget, you're one of five. You think you're the mayor, you think you run the town.
I don't run the town at all.
You're one of five.
Exactly, I'm one of five.
Yeah.
And I don't think that there's anybody sitting on this board that agrees with the methodology that you're handling.
Grow up. You're nothing but a bully. You've always been a bully.
Me?
Since I started pulling my papers, you went after me. Grow up.
Far from it.
You're trying to time me in the federal government. Trying to time me in the federal government. You ever heard of Google?
I have been sitting here and serving in the public office for over 50 years.
Google is free. Look up anyone you want. There you go, buddy.
Anyway, so I, I don't believe that, you know, town employees should be subject to this.
Oh, that's good.
And I would think that the administration.
All right, moving on. Throw it on the agenda, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise you are in violation of the open meeting law. Thank you.
I'm in violation of the open meeting law? We're in open meetings.
Oh.
How about that?
Get out of here, we're in open meetings.
Yeah, how about that?
Oh, that means you can't violate open meeting laws if you're in an open meeting? That's, that's the way, that's the O'Leary twist. That's the O'Leary page four scoop.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Scoop it up.
Anyway.
Throw it in.
I have nothing else, but board members, just be cognizant, be aware, and I think we need to be, ensure that our employees are, are well protected.
Moving on.
And not treated properly.
Moving on.
Other than that, text order of business. Follow the annual October town meeting.
Clown.
Review and discuss updates to warrant articles. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you, there's two articles that I would advise the board take action on this evening, for, and I highlighted them both in the packet this evening. First is Article III, which is on page nine, the creation and transfer of funds to a special projects, special purpose stabilization fund. You may recall we put this warrant article on there without the reference to special projects, so it just said, create a special purpose stabilization fund for a purpose to be determined later. After some discussion with town council and with our accounting advisors and some discussion with the financial planning team, the recommendation is going to be to pass over this article and instead to transfer the funds that were to go into this new stabilization fund into the capital improvement stabilization fund, which is addressed under Article V. So that would increase the transfer at $250,000 by roughly $3.5 million. So I would ask the board to vote for two motions. The first is to recommend passing over Article III and then the second is to recommend, it would be a revote of recommending Article V with a new dollar amount.
Do we have a motion?
It should be in the packet, yes.
Mr. Gilberto.
Excuse me, through the chair, Mr. Smarren, do we have a motion?
Mr. Gilberto.
Do we have a motion?
Quick question for you.
Okay, please make the motion, then we can have discussion.
Article III. Mr. Chairman, I move to pass over Article III, create and transfer funds to special projects, special purpose stabilization fund.
It's the second, second by Mr. Studo. Now discussion, Mr. Massey.
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman. This was about in, in north of $3 million and now we're transferring to 250. Can you please explain where the rest of it's going, please?
So this article initially contemplated creating a stabilization fund, transferring $3.5 million from free cash into it. In lieu of creating an additional stabilization fund, the recommendation is now to transfer those funds into the capital improvement stabilization fund, which would bring the total transfer in from $250,000 under that article, Article V, to $3.75 million.
Thank you.
So the motion before us is to recommend passing over the article. Any further discussion on the motion to recommend passing over? Hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Smarren?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next.
And the next corresponding action would be to revote a recommendation on Article V with the dollar amount now being not $250,000, but roughly $3.750 million. And the motion would be to recommend.
So the motion would be to recommend.
Article V. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article IV, fiscal year 2026 appropriate to.
Article IV?
Article V.
Article V.
Yeah.
Fiscal year 2026 appropriate to transfer funds to capital stabilization fund?
Capital improvement stabilization fund, yes.
Capital, sorry, capital improvement, sorry, stabilization fund.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Massey.
Yes, we already put in the warrant $250,000, so the residents believe that $250,000 is getting transferred and we're maybe 15 times more than that? Is there any issue? Does anyone see an issue?
There's no issue in relation to, that's in the explanatory portion of the article, it's not, it's not the article itself, it's the explanation at the time of the printing of the warrant.
Oh, we recommend it, we recommend it already.
We're still recommending money into the stabilization, but you don't have to support it, but I mean, the money's going to go somewhere and it was determined that what we originally planned probably wasn't the best idea. We have a better idea, the warrants went to press and as indicated in the warrant, those explanations are based upon knowledge that we have at the time of the printing of the warrant and every year there's some sort of changes between the printing and the commenting date itself.
Now, this is our ARPA funds? Have we gotten that certified yet?
Yes, today.
Today was the ARPA funds or free cash?
Free cash, which includes.
Which includes the ARPA funds.
Did, were they able to separate that?
It's included in the balance, so we, I've talked with the chair about going through the details of the free cash certification at the next meeting as an agenda item and we can certainly review it.
Mr. Studo.
My understanding when we did that is that at the state level, there's no, the, the separation is we do it at the local level.
Correct.
Correct, if I remember correctly? But at the state level, they're just certifying the free, you know, they're just sending that email saying you're good on this.
On the total, which includes.
On the total.
Among other funding sources, that, that source.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm trying to get back to is, again, I, I thought that the ARPA funds were in the 1.9 million dollar range, somehow popped up as 3.6, so I'd like to get that, you know, in writing to see. If not, I can send all the public records requests. Thank you.
You can always make another one. But the answers will be given by the administration as far as what the breakdowns were. So, any further discussion on the motion before us to recommend Article?
Aye.
Article V. Hearing none. Mr. Massey?
Say it, say it again, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
In favor of recommending Article V?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Smarren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that brings us to the next agenda item. Would may wish to pass over 9 Mill Street at this point in terms of legal bills.
Yeah, and again, we may, if we go into executive session, we may come back out to open session just to act on if we need to make, if the motion is going to be made, do you think we will?
I don't anticipate a motion in public session at this point. Imagine there'd be a follow-up discussion.
All right, we'll pass over 9 Mill Street.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Massey.
Any other articles we need to go over tonight?
As far as, for additional recommendations?
Yes.
I did not have any additional for this evening. There may be additional discussion on the 29th.
You have something suggesting that we didn't have a recommendation on yet?
Article VIII. Mr. Gilberto, you mentioned that, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gilberto, you mentioned that we could separate these out to vote on them separately. This means a lot to me, so I'm wondering, I'd like my board's response, please.
From my recollection from the last meeting is that we were going to do that on town meeting floor.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, you can't, can't do that because it's one article.
I'm just not really what we talked about, I'm not, I'm not giving an opinion.
I know that, I know that, but here we are again, going over articles, I'm just wondering.
Still didn't miss anything on town meeting floor.
Okay.
That's just me.
Yeah, that was the consensus of the meeting.
That was not the consensus. You looked at Mike and you were like, I don't know, can we do that, kind of thing?
No, that's not true.
Um, you're always recorded. Mr. Gilberto, can you please clarify for me and the board as well as how that can happen?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I anticipate, as is certainly not infrequently, if not customarily the case, that the board would vote on this article with its recommendation the evening of town meeting, at its meeting before goes to town meeting floor and then report its recommendations on town meeting floor. And I say that because this is often an article where there are changes. A good faith effort, what we knew on this article, we put in the description so that folks would see that, but there is, you know, certainly potential, if not likelihood, of additional actions that might be needed, so I anticipate us asking the board to vote on that, that evening.
Understood, Mr. Gilberto, I apologize. Just to clarify, my request, can you again refresh the board as to how we can separate each line item within the article and vote on each one?
Uh, yeah, I, I would imagine the board would entertain separate votes in its meeting and then report those votes accordingly to town meeting.
Okay, understanding, understanding. The chairman has just almost made extremely divisive comments. Mr. Chairman, do you expect to allow the board to take that vote in that way?
Anybody can make a motion to divide the motions and recommend dividing the motions to the moderator to allow it.
No, I, well, I thought, no, no, we're making the recommendation at town meeting, which is before the town meeting, which is the night.
Which is what we.
Right before.
Which is what we, which is what we're going to be doing, is the night off.
And that's what I'm asking, Mr. Chairman.
We will be taking a vote the night of town meeting prior to on our recommendations on this article.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay. Okay, you'll allow that to happen?
It's not a question of allowing, it will occur. Contrary to your impression, I'm not a dictator, and I'm not a king.
No, I never called you dictator. Mayor, mayor was...
Mayor, too.
Close to the other one, but...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the promotion, I hope it comes with a raise.
Anything for you, anything for you.
Anything else, nothing else on the town meeting action, right? So now, legal bills. Mrs. Smar?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for KP Law for the month of July in an amount of $18,444.60 as follows. General, $15,965.10. Labor, $892.50. Twenty, Elm Street, 40p, $1,587 even, for a total of $18,444.60.
We have a second?
Second.
So any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Smar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting minutes.
Uh, one more legal bill.
Oh, put it up, yeah, I'm sorry. One more.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for American Arbitration Association in the amount of $375 as follows. Labor, $375 even, total $375.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Smar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we move on to this.
I'll just note, Mr. Chairman, through you, I see that the header says Monday, September third, we all know that was Wednesday, September third, but we'll make that correction.
So script is in there, so the motion just...